Good evening, everyone. This meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, could you please read the adequate notice of compliance statement?
An adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the City Clerk's Office in preparation of the open meeting notice dated July 23, 2020, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. And now, roll call, please.
Mr. Bowman?
You're muted.
Oh, I know. Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Think he's on his way, but not here yet.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
Here.
President Fox?
Here. Okay, Madam Clerk, would you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
Yes. A closed session meeting is authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. This meeting is also being streamed live through YouTube. To view this meeting via YouTube, please visit the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the top of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating remotely, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during this meeting through public notice dated July 23, 2020, which provided information for those wishing to participate during public comment periods at this council meeting. Public comment will be permitted at specified times as outlined in the agenda. Please refrain from commenting until solicited by the council president. For those members of the public who wish to make a comment during a designated public comment period, please use the raise hand feature and you will be called upon by the council president. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just to keep things interesting, keep everyone on their toes, we're gonna do things a little out of order. We're now gonna do the Pledge of Allegiance, so if everyone could please stand.
Thank you.
Okay. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
With liberty.
And justice.
Justice.
For all.
For all.
So, moving on, we're gonna go to approval of minutes. So, we are going to defer the June 20, the special meeting of June 29 minutes until the September meeting. But we do have the regular enclosed session minutes from September, I'm sorry, from July 8. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. All right, moving on to reports. Our first report is from our mayor. Madam Mayor?
Thank you very much, Council President. Good evening, everyone. A few things. First of all, the Summit Free Public Library reopened to the public at 25% capacity on Monday, July 6, for regular summer hours. That's Monday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. and Friday and Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And we're closed on Sundays until September 13. All people who enter the building over the age of two are required to wear a mask. All visits should be completed in 20 minutes or less, and no public computers are available for use. If you want to get something photocopied, you can email to them. They'll copy it and have it ready for you. Book drops are open, but all programs will be held virtually until further notice. A lobby pickup service is available for people who do not want to enter the building. So, in order to avail yourself of that, go to summitslibrary.org for more information. Primary election results. Official results for the July 7 primary have been posted by the Union County Clerk's Office. A link to the results is provided on the city website, City Clerk's page, under the Elections tab. The 2020 Census. Again, it is not too late to fill out the 2020 Census. In August, census takers will be going door-to-door to gather data from people who live in households that did not respond online. If you have not filled out the census, please take five minutes and go to census.gov. An accurate population count is essential for the City of Summit in determining future funding for programs and services for our community. The Mayor's Forum on Diversity. Members of the community are invited to join me in the Mayor's Forum on Diversity for an online conversation on Saturday, August 8, at 9:00 a.m. on systemic racism and ethnic bias, and how it is perpetuated by and impacts us all. More and more information will be available later this week on the city website, and a news release will also be sent to the media. I encourage you to attend if you are able. It is only by understanding and embracing our differences that we can create opportunities for marginalized citizens and strengthen our community. And lastly, the CARES Act funding. So, earlier today, the state of New Jersey announced that it is directing an additional $15 million in CARES Act funding to the New Jersey Economic Development Authority's Small Business Emergency Assistant Grant Program, which supports small businesses across New Jersey. To date, more than 10,600 businesses have been approved for grants totaling more than $44 million. The program is currently oversubscribed and not accepting applications, but the NJEDA intends to use this new CARES Act funding to fulfill a significant portion of the applications already in the pipeline, particularly where direct federal funding was not provided to counties. More information is available at nj.gov. And thank you, Council President. That's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now, moving on to Michael Rogers, our city administrator, for his report. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. I also have some good news. The Summit Police Department and City Engineering Division submitted for and have been awarded a pedestrian safety grant in the amount of $15,000 from the New Jersey Department of Transportation to be utilized towards reducing the number of pedestrian-related motor vehicle crashes. To reach this objective, the grant will be applied to enforcement, education, and engineering activities that will be effective in reducing the number of pedestrian accidents in the downtown Summit. The Broad Street Garage will be closed from 3:00 p.m. on Friday, August 1 through Sunday, August 23 for repair work. Overnight parking permit holders may park in the Broad Street East Lot adjacent to the garage. For alternate overnight parking locations, please contact Parking Services at parking@cityofsummit.org or call 908-522-5100. Another reminder that estimated tax bills have been mailed to Summit property owners and are due on August 1. There is a 10-day grace period, and late fees will be assessed starting August 11. And then finally, the deadline for annual renewal of dog and cat licenses is August 31. Summit residents with questions about licensing or rabies vaccinations should call the Summit Health Department at 908-277-6464. And that's all I have for this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator. And now on to the Council President's report. So, first of all, the Department of Community Services has received notification that approvals for outdoor dining and expanded public spaces on Maple Street have been extended to August 30 by the State Department of Transportation. Summit currently has 30 outdoor dining locations. If you have not had a chance to enjoy a meal outdoors, I hope you'll do so. Our restaurants have done an outstanding job transforming sidewalks, parking, and street space into fun and festive dining spots. So, I suggest that you get out there and enjoy some of our great restaurants and our wonderful downtown as well. Moving on to curbside recycling. Changes to curbside recycling collection were put into effect on July 1. The new recycling rules prohibit putting recycling in plastic bags curbside. And if the recycling contractor will not collect bagged recycling, so you should place it loose in a covered bin. In addition, cardboard and paper must be kept dry to be recycled. And residents are asked to put their cardboard and paper in covered bins or to wait until the morning to put it out if the weather forecast calls for rain. In addition, parking in downtown Summit. Fees for on-street parking in downtown Summit and for parking in the municipal lots and garages were reinstated on Wednesday, July 15. If you're looking for a contactless way to pay for parking, please consider using our smartphone to download the free Park Mobile app. Pay each time with a credit card linked to an account, or you can use the Park Mobile Wallet for parking transactions to be deducted from an account balance. And for more information, you can go to cityofsummit.org/parking. Finally, New Jersey Transit has masks. They've received more than 245,000 cloth masks from the U.S. Department of Transportation and the Federal Transit Administration. Last week and continuing through the end of this week, New Jersey Transit Customer Service ambassadors will begin distributing masks at numerous stations. Customers were provided with these masks if they needed a face covering, and major terminals will maintain a limited supply of masks at customer service offices in the event that customers forget or lose their masks. Wearing a mask is required on all New Jersey Transit trains and buses to help control the spread of COVID-19 virus. So, that's it for the Council President's report tonight, and now we're moving on to presentations. And tonight, we're fortunate to have Megan Avalon, our regional, Westfield Regional Health Director here to talk to us about trends in COVID-19 and the latest in testing and contact tracing and to answer all of the questions from members of council and also from the public. So, Megan, thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you, Council President. My pleasure. So, yeah, I just wanted to update you all on where we stand. As I'm sure you have all seen in the headlines, New Jersey is really doing great this week. We are the only state in the nation to really see a decline in two weeks. But, you know, the transmission rate is now just above one. Specific to Summit, we are seeing two trends. The first is an increase in young adults that are coming down with the virus. By young adults, I mean individuals 17 to 21. About half of the cases that we received through July were young adults. You know, that's certainly different than what we saw earlier in March, April, even May. March, April, May, young adults really weren't testing positive. It was really, you know, middle-aged adults and older. We're still interviewing every case that comes through, and what I can tell you from interviewing is that it seems like middle-aged adults and older, we've really modified our behaviors, right? We're not really attending the larger gatherings. If we are, we are certainly wearing masks, and we're really taking all proper precautions. When we're interviewing young adults, what they're telling us is, you know, they have the best intentions, but when they're at an outside barbecue, you know, maybe you stay six feet apart for the first hour. And then, you know, then the distance gets shorter and shorter. The other thing that we're really grappling with is sometimes we are not getting cooperation from individuals we reach out to. Either they just don't call us back, or if they do call us, it's one-word answers. "I don't live with anybody. I never went anywhere. I don't see anybody, and I've never left the house," you know, in two weeks, which seems unlikely. So, I do have an infographic. We are starting a public health social media campaign to really explain why it's important individuals pick up the phone and call us back. So, Rosie, how much be able to share the screen so I could explain what that is?
Sure. There you go.
Okay. So, we developed this infographic that I sent out yesterday, and the idea is this can be texted. This can be posted to social media, but the take-home is, why should you answer the phone, right? So, the information is so valuable. When we do these interviews, the Westfield Regional Health Department at this point has done well over 1,500. We're getting information about what symptoms look like in individuals, what type of symptoms they have, and where their exposures may have been. It's also really important that everybody understands the information is completely confidential. If you're an 18-year-old and 19-year-old, we don't share any information you provide us with your parents. We never share information with employers. Sometimes people will ask questions like, "Well, will the mayor?" No. I can assure everybody that nobody on the governing body knows any of the information. In the Health Department, the team that does the case contact interviews, we're largely nurses. So, we understand patient confidentiality, and we have medical licenses to protect. So, you know, no identifying information is ever given. And the information is safe. Sometimes with the young adults, we realize that there's some hesitancy because some of the events that they're at where this illness may have been spread also involves underage drinking, right? Certainly, we've seen that in other parts of the state. Certainly, we don't condone behavior like that, but it's really important for young adults to understand that your information's safe with us. We don't share information with law enforcement or other government agencies. Sometimes our people are curious. Right when they answer the phone, are you looking for immigration status and legal status? And we're not interested in that at all. The only thing truly that we're interested in is really getting information so we can stop the spread of disease. So, the importance of doing these interviews are to identify new cases quickly, find out who these individuals have been in contact with, and really, it's all a race against the clock to really get ahead of any outbreaks that may be brewing. And also, another thing individuals might not realize is, you know, by talking to us, you can get any help that you may need. Certainly, sometimes when we're on the phone, individuals talk to us about another social service that they may need. And, you know, we are, we're government agencies in the community. The Health Department's well-connected to resources available in the community, and we spend a lot of these calls connecting people to the resources that they may need that might not be directly related to the virus. So, we're really, really hoping to get the word out that we're not scary. Certainly, we're not the quarantine police. You know, we're just looking to get information, and we're really just looking to get ahead of the virus. I promise you, we're not scary. I make a lot of the calls myself, and I don't think I'm very scary. Maybe my kids sometimes do, but, you know, nobody's gonna get in trouble. And oh, the other thing, we're not judgmental, right? Nobody's looking to judge anybody for any type of behavior that they may have partook in. We're truly, truly just looking to get ahead of the virus. So, I did send this out yesterday. Please feel free to share it with your friends, to text it out, to share it on social media. We're really just trying to let the community know that talking to us isn't, it's not gonna hurt. I promise. I think that's it for the infographic. So, the other thing that we're really busy doing, while we're doing still all these COVID investigations and contact tracings, we're working hand-in-hand with the Board of Education. I'm in contact with Summit Board of Education. Their Acting Superintendent, it seems like, daily at this point, trying to get their plans finalized, up and running. So, that has kept us busy as well. And then, while we're doing this, we're also reopening things following GAF complaints, and we're also starting now to think about mass vaccination clinics and how that may look when a vaccine is ready. So, certainly, very, very busy in the department. Any specific questions?
Council President, we have two from the public who have questions.
Okay. So, maybe I'll open up to the council members, and then we'll take the public questions. So, Council Member Little, you had a question?
Thank you. I wanted to say, as a member of the Safety Committee and as the public housing liaison, I've had a lot of opportunity to work with Megan over the last few months, and I just want to thank her for all the hard work she's done. She's just been amazing and such a wonderful resource for our community. We're so lucky to have her. It certainly wasn't the job she signed up for. I don't think Global Pandemic was on that list of qualifications for, you know, that she signed up to do, and she has just really risen to the challenge in an amazing way, and we are very, very lucky to have her. She is not scary. I can attest to that. Very helpful, and she responds very quickly to any concerns or questions we have and is a wonderful resource. So, first of all, thank you. One of the times that I reached out to you recently was that I had questions from residents about contact tracing and about how you reach people. People were concerned that they have landlines that they don't answer, that they don't answer spam, or they don't answer calls from people they don't know. So, can you talk, you answered my question very well, but I hope that you can repeat it here and just let people know, what would they see on their screen or their home phone if you're calling? And how do you get these numbers? Do you call cell phones, home phones? Can you just explain a little bit about that process so people understand it better?
Sure. We are really, really persistent. The labs come to us through an electronic system. So, anybody that tests positive for COVID-19, the labs are electronically sent via a secure online portal. And the contact number that we have is whatever contact number the resident puts on the lab requisition sheet. So, like, if you go to Kane College Testing Site, whatever number you gave the individual who registered you there, that's the number that we have to call. So, if it's a home phone number, we have a home phone number. Certainly, if you left a cell phone number, we have a cell phone number. If we do have a cell phone number, I can tell you that we also are big into texting information as well. So, what we'll typically do is we'll call, we'll leave a message. I'll send a text message saying, "Hi, you know, this is Megan from the Health Department. We just left you a message. You know, we're gonna try you back tomorrow at 2:00 p.m." So, that's pretty common, too. I make a lot of calls, quite honestly, from the office, but also from my work cellphone as well. You know, it's important to remember, we're working around the clock. We're working seven days a week still at this point. So, sometimes residents will say, you know, "Oh, I see you're calling from a 908 exchange, but it doesn't say town of Westfield. I feel a little uncomfortable talking to you." We totally understand that. And in those circumstances, we'll say, "That's completely fine. Why don't you call back on Monday? We'll give you the office phone number, or I can call you back on Monday, and you can see the office caller ID." And that's the other thing with these calls, too. If at any time an individual wants to disconnect the call, we're not gonna force you to stay on the phone. So, no. So, if you pick up and start talking to us, please, I don't think that you're obligated to continue talking to us.
Thank you. So, I had a couple of questions for you. One question would be about quarantining. So, there's sort of a few parts to this. One is someone who tests positive and is asymptomatic. How long are they required to quarantine? I've heard conflicting information.
It's 10 days from the day that they test positive.
Okay. So, and if there are symptoms, is it also 10 days from the end of the symptoms?
If they're symptomatic, it's 10 days from the onset of symptoms or 24 hours after symptoms resolve, whichever is later. I can tell you from doing like hundreds of these calls, the vast, vast majority of individuals who are not hospitalized feel better, or at least symptoms resolve somewhat within 10 days. So, for the vast majority of residents, it's 10 days from symptom onset.
Okay. And can you also talk a little bit about testing? I think there's a lot of confusion about when it's, how long you have to wait to test.
Yeah. So, let's say that you mean in the context of you were around somebody who tested positive and you were exposed?
Yes, I think that's the question. If you were exposed to someone, how long should you wait before getting a test?
Yes. I'm sorry, I didn't hear the whole question.
So, there's no, there's no actual clear-cut guidance on this in terms of what the magic number day is to get the test. What we know is the vast majority of individuals who have been exposed to end up testing positive, test positive by day nine. There are still a few that don't test positive until day 13, right? So, even if you get a negative test, let's say on day nine, that does not take the place of the quarantine. The quarantine, which is 14 days after the exposure, needs to be completed truly to stop the spread of disease so we can guarantee the stopping, the spread of the disease, even if you do have a negative test result within that time. Also, what we're dealing with now, which is very frustrating when we're trying to get ahead of this illness, is we're back to very long delays with lab reporting. So, sometimes now, we don't even get results until 10 days after individual tests. So, it's so important that while you're waiting for your lab result, you continue to quarantine and you maintain that whole quarantine period.
So, is the quarantine a mandatory requirement?
So, it is mandatory. You know, we are not the quarantine police, right? You know, I don't have the staff or the capacity to have somebody sit outside every single door and make sure that people stay home for 14 days. But I think the expectation is, as members of a community, we want to protect those really vulnerable community members, and truly, the best way to do that is to stay home throughout your isolation or quarantine period.
Okay, thank you. And one last question. There've been some questions about giving the public information, you know, when we report our COVID cases and COVID fatalities. Some communities give detail as to ages and that kind of information. And we have not done that so much in the past, and I'm wondering if that's something, it sounds like now you're giving out some information about age ranges of cases. Is that something that can be made available to us to let the public know?
Yeah, I think definitely age ranges. And I feel like we were giving out age of individuals who have been deceased. But it's really important to remember, for residents to remember, this is very much health information, right? Protected health information. And we really have to be careful, I really have to be careful that whatever I release is non-identifying. And you'd be really surprised. You know, some things that the average person might not think is identifying can be identifying in a smaller community. So, we're always trying to, I always ask myself, what would be the public benefit to knowing this information? But certainly, age ranges, you know, we could certainly release. The most common question that I get from Summit residents, too, is where were people exposed, right? Everybody wants to know. And the reality is, the vast majority of people, we just don't really know exactly. You know, recently, we can say, especially with the young adults, most of them, the vast majority of them, were exposed through social events, whether that be like an outside barbecue or maybe going to, you know, outside dining with a friend, and they're able to let us know if they had an exposure that way. But a lot of times, individuals will say, you know, "I really wasn't anywhere. I really wasn't in contact with anybody who was sick." So, that's why sometimes we don't release that type of information. It's not that we don't want to, it's just that we don't always know.
Okay, thank you. Council Member Hairston?
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Megan. I can only echo Beth's high regard for the hard work that you have put in. What folks don't know is that you are the president of the Health Officers Association at Rutgers. So, you are plugged into what is happening around the state. You're also influencing, you raise issues, and I just want to thank you for your proactive and insightful ways in approaching this. Like Beth, I have the privilege of being on the Health and Safety, and so we get to hear what's happening on a regular basis. And a couple of things I think it will be important for you to share is that there is not only the testing to see if you've had it, but there is also the antibody testing that folks can get. And in addition to talking about that, I wanted to respond to Council President's inquiry about the demographics information. Although you don't release it, because we're such a small community, you are collecting it, and we are monitoring it because we're looking for you are collecting it and we are monitoring it because we're looking for trends. And that is how we're able to see, is Summit behaving any differently? And how do we do interventions? So I think if those, I just wanted to make sure Council President knew that. But if you could talk about the testing and, and then how, what we've learned thus far about how the virus has changed. Those two things, I think, would be helpful for the public to know as we're talking about going back to school.
So, so how the virus has changed in, in what?
No, what we, what we know, what we know that's different and why there is this comfort level of, for kids to go back to school, what we know differently. But first, talk about the antibody testing, please.
Yeah, so, so there are a bunch of antibody tests out. They've gotten better over the last few months. And, you know, we, we say that the antibody test is another tool in a resident's toolbox. So certainly, if you think that you were infected months ago, but were unable to get a confirmatory test, by all means, please feel free to get an antibody test. But it's important to remember two things. The antibody tests, number one, aren't necessarily 100% accurate. Sometimes there is some cross-reactivity with seasonal coronavirus, like a typical cold sometimes, that, that you might get. So it's not really a true guarantee that you were infected previously with novel coronavirus. The reason people want to look for antibody tests is because there's a sense that there's immunity that comes after you've been infected. And CDC has just put out, I think just last week, some updated guidance. So, so what they're saying is, we, we have a pretty good idea that immunity from coronavirus can last for three months from novel coronavirus. But we're not really sure how long immunity lasts past then. So if you get an antibody test and it comes back positive and you had symptoms, let's say a few months ago, it's still really important to take all the precautions, wearing a mask, washing your hands, keeping the social distance between you and others because we can't guarantee that you will be immune six months, nine months, a year down the road, even if you were infected once. And then for the schools, you know, we're constantly learning about, about this virus. And the main thing that, that we're really understanding now, that we really weren't sure about when schools first let out back in March, is we really understand the most effective way that this virus is spread is person-to-person, social interactions. Back in March, there was a thought that it was very easily spread on surfaces and touching objects. But, but really, what we're seeing now worldwide is that we truly think the vast, vast majority of spread is really just person-to-person, close contact. So knowing that, we're able to really put interim controls in a school setting to keep students and staff safe. And that's what I've been working with the Board of Education with daily to try to make sure, or to ensure that those plans do keep everybody safe once school restarts in September.
Thank you very much. And I want to ask, are you monitoring our camp programs? I had the pleasure of being at the community center and saw the kids very active and masked. And will you be paying attention to that and letting us know if there is anything that is of concern with that, that, you know, that we learn about, that we should learn from that?
Of course. All camps have to be licensed by the health department. So we are monitoring them, we are inspecting them. Certainly, we're fielding calls from parents about them. You know, we, we want nothing more than to make sure that children, obviously, are, are kept as safe as they can be. We've done lots and lots of education with community organizations and camp leaders, who, camp directors, daycare centers, that, to, to really help them understand, you know, the importance of these measures. And I have to say, across the board, they have all been wonderful and have taken it so completely seriously. But, you know, we let them know that we are here as a resource. And, you know, we don't, the one thing I have to say, communication's been great, right? These, these childcare providers, these camp providers, they're not calling us when a situation strikes. I mean, they're obviously calling us then, but they're talking to us really daily, you know, hey, what, I thought about this scenario, what would happen in this? And we're really ensuring that they're comfortable talking to us so that anything they want to run by us, that they know they can, that they know that we're truly here as a resource.
Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President, and, and thank you, Megan, for being here and for all the work that your office is doing. You guys always communicate very clearly, provide resources. And I think because of that, you've saved lives. So thank you for doing that. So I have a few questions. So does your?
I think Councilmember Vartan may have, the screen may have frozen. Maybe we'll go on, I think Councilmember Naidoo had questions. Maybe we'll do that and then come back to Councilmember Vartan, if that's okay.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Megan, thank you for your team, for all of the hard work that you have been doing for months now and going on, that's been going on. Quick question. In, in the beginning, there was a lot of talk about people who were either symptomatic or came directly in contact with people who had, you know, likely to have had COVID, should get tested. Then subsequently became that maybe it should be broader, that people, a broader group of people could go and get tested. Where do we stand right now? What is your recommendation about, do you need to be symptomatic in order to get tested for COVID? Should you, or is it, or be person in contact? Or is it more broadly that people who have the opportunity to get tested should get tested? What is your thoughts about that?
So I, I, I think that individuals who are interested in getting tested certainly can. We always really try to hold back individuals who are exposed and individuals who are symptomatic. There's currently a delay in testing, as we know, as we all read about. So, you know, certainly, you know, we encourage testing, but I think it's really important that individuals who've been exposed or are, are feeling sick really get tested on, right now.
Thank you for that.
Councilmember Vartan, we'll come back to you now, now that you're unfrozen.
Thank you. The wifi is all over the place today. So my, my question was going to be, you've had the help of school nurses in your office, I think, in, in the last few months. Do you anticipate having any staffing inadequacy in the next few weeks as they start to go back to schools?
So we actually haven't been utilizing school nurses. We have FEMA nurses. But, but we actually have hired a few school nurses to help us in the evenings and on weekends. So one of the things we've learned is, for whatever reason, we get a better, we get a better response rate in the evenings. You know, like between four and six. So we're, we're trying to go with that. But we do have a team of wonderful nurses and we've added to them. You know, the, the goal is to get the, the team really trained. We have a new system, you may have read about, COM Care. It's just a new way of, new electronic system that we're kind of learning how to use. But my goal is to make sure that my team is in place and trained so that if we do start to see a sharp increase in cases in the fall, everybody's ready to go.
Okay, and what, why the testing delay? Why do you think that's happening? Are more people getting tested? So are we like two weeks away from, you know, having a whole bunch more cases potentially?
Well, you have to remember, right? We essentially have three main labs nationwide. We have LabCorp, Quest, BioReference, right? So they are inundated with tests in the south and in the southwest. You know, cases in Florida, the, the hundreds of thousands of cases that, that they're seeing in Florida definitely affect those labs. And they affect our turnaround times as well. What the labs are telling us is, it's not that the labs are taking a long time to be run, it's that they're sitting in a refrigerator and they can't even get to them in time, you know, in a timely manner, because there's so many other tests that have to get done before them. And then you find some smaller labs that have a quick turnaround time, but word gets out that they have a quick turnaround time. And then before you know it, even those labs with a quick turnaround time now have a delayed turnaround time. So the, 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 the testing has been a true uphill battle for us, especially when we're trying to contact trace. And, and we're really trying to get in touch with individuals that may have come in contact with a person.
Okay. And then my last question would be, have you seen an increase in other illnesses? Like, I'm thinking, mental health crises, like depression, anxiety, suicide?
We haven't seen, but we, we typically don't see that. But when, do these interviews, you know, people have expressed to us that their anxiety's up, right? That, and, and, and that's when we talk about like the social services. Sometimes we're able to tie people into services that they might not even know exist. Certainly, like my anxiety's up, right? This is a really uncertain time that we're living in. And we just turn on the news every day and it's never good. I, I think that, you know, we're, we're really trying to just, you know, get residents, if they need any additional help, into those services, or let them know what services exist.
Okay. And is, is there anything that your office needs? Or, or is there any, you know, I guess, last pitch for, you know, people signing up to be contact tracers? I, you know, is there anything that you're missing that this body can help you with?
No, you know, the, the one thing I wanted to do today is really just make a plea to residents to just, you know, really encourage them to, to answer our calls, to give us the information that we're asking for. Truly, you know, we are, you know, I, I, I think we truly are saving lives. You know, there's an idea, when we talk to residents, that anything outside is completely safe. Events outside are completely safe. And that, that's just not true. It's safer than inside, but, but it's not without risk, especially if you're in close proximity to other individuals.
Thank you.
So I think that's a great segue. We've got two, two members of the public who had questions. So let's open up the floor to them. First one is, is Henry Bassman. Henry, I'm gonna, okay, you're unmuted. Go ahead, Henry, you need to unmute, you need to, okay, I think you're, I think you want me, he seems to be muted still. Nicole, can you fix that, please?
How's this?
Perfect, Henry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thanks for the presentation. It was very, very informative. My first question was already answered, the 10-day delay between administering the test and receiving the results. And I, I heard the frustration and, and I can understand that. But my second question is, you mentioned that you have FEMA nurses. What kind of support are you getting from FEMA and/or state agencies?
Well, we, we have gotten a very small amount of funding from the New Jersey Department of Health. One thing that, that people may be surprised to hear, oh, oh, sorry, sorry. One thing that people may be surprised to hear is a local public health in New Jersey has received less than 1% of the available funding that went to the New Jersey Department of Health. I, 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 I like to say this every time it's brought up. Truly, we are the hidden heroes and we've been underfunded, public health, and under-resourced for way too long, you know? And then a pandemic hits and we're doing the best we can and we're doing an amazing job. But it, I mean, it, it really boggles my mind to think that, you know, we are on the front lines, right? We, we are, we are preventing people from getting sick and we've gotten less than 1% of all available funding. So, so while we've gotten a small amount of funding, it's incredibly small.
Henry, did you have any other questions?
No, I didn't, I just, then I'm sorry to hear that, that funding is such an issue.
Before you hop, sorry, before you hop off, can you just state your address, please? So we have that for the record.
Bassman, 18 Hartley Road in Summit.
Thank you. And I didn't mean to cut you off. Was there something else you were saying? It's a little bit of delay, okay?
Saying was, I, I understand the frustration and about not having sufficient funding. And I respect the fact that you're continuing to battle against that and doing the best you can with the resources that you have available to you. Public health is very important and prevention is a lot more important than, than cure.
Thank you, Henry. So our next call is Karen Rehoffer. And Karen, if you could state your name and your address, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Karen Rehoffer, 34 Parkview Terrace. And first, of course, thank you, everyone, for all you've been doing and continue to do. In a few weeks, I will be taking my son back to college, like many other Summit residents will be doing. He's at the University of Richmond and Virginia is on the travel advisory list. I plan on making the trip in the same day, drive down, back and forth the same day. I won't make stops on the way, but for the exception of getting gas. And while I'm at Richmond, it's very controlled. On campus, you have to wear a mask. You're limited in duration, how long you can, you can be on campus. I'll be in and out within a couple of hours, just to help him unpack. And at all times, masked and following all social distancing guidelines. I understand that on the New Jersey website, there's a, there's some guidance saying that the travel advisory doesn't apply if a New Jersey resident is in a state that's on the advisory list, but the resident was only passing through for a limited duration. So I take that to mean that for my trip to Richmond, under the circumstances as described, I do not necessarily need to quarantine for two weeks upon my return. So that's really, that's really the core question. I guess I can, I can layer it with, well, let's say while I'm down there, I run into Bed Bath &amp; Beyond in the supermarket and make a couple of extra stops. And I understand it's case by case, but, but generally, that's, that's the core question. If you can speak to that, Megan, that would be great. Thank you.
Sure. So we look at this in public health as levels of risk, right? So certainly, traveling to a state that has a higher incidence and prevalence of COVID-19, it's riskier, especially, you know, some of the states that have very high rates. And then we look at activity levels. What will you be doing when you're there? Who will you be seeing? You know, so, you know, certainly, you know, maybe just passing through, stopping at a gas station could be considered low risk. But it's important to remember that the quarantine in New Jersey is voluntary, right? It, it's voluntary, but it is expected. So, you know, if individuals are able to quarantine, we obviously think that's ideal because, you know, there is some risk going to a higher incident state. But, you know, most importantly, we're really trying to get residents to self-monitor, you know, symptoms. And really, upon returning home, even, you know, if you feel it's low risk to, to keep a low profile. So, so it is voluntary, it's not mandated. But ideally, anybody, you know, ideally, we would want anybody who travels to those states to, to really do the best they can to, you know, stay at home for the next two weeks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from members of the public? Okay, are there any other questions from members of council? Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council President. Very quickly, I just want to repeat everything everybody said or reiterate. Thank you, Megan, you're doing a phenomenal job. You're always there and I just, it gives me such a great sense of confidence that, that I know I speak with a professional like you, who is so very caring. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments from members of council? Thank you so much for coming tonight and answering all our questions. This is very informative. And, you know, we appreciate all the, the help that you've given us in working through all these issues. So thanks and be well.
Thank you. Be well, too. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on, we're on to the public comment portion of the council meeting. So if there are any members of council, okay, we've got, we've got, let's see, Esperanza Urrego, would you like to state your name and your address, please? I think you're still muted.
Okay, I think I'm mute.
You're good now. Could you state your name and address, please?
Yes, good evening, everyone. My name is Esperanza Urrego. I'm the owner of Esperanza Salon and Spa located at 32 Maple Street. And my concern is that, is there, is there any rule and regulation in New Jersey to perform hair services in a private homes or on a site? And how the city of Summit can inform the community about these rules and regulation? After more than three, more, three and a half months, salons could reopen following special protocols and safety regulation for clients and staff. One of the most difficult challenges I have to face is that not all clients have come back to the salon, making very difficult for, to meet the payments of bills and obligation that never stop, plus keep up with payroll. I have noticed that more and more independent hairdressers are promoting publicly through social media their services at discount prices and in private homes or onsite, causing more stress to this, for salon's performance. How Summit will protect beauty salons from this situation? Is there any, any way that Summit community be informed and be encouraged to support beauty salons over individual stylists? At Esperanza Salon and Spa, we are giving special appointments for immune compromised clients. And in addition to cleaning and disinfecting every time after every client, and you have, and have you been aware of this situation? If not, how this can be addressed?
Michael, do you have an answer to that? I, I don't actually know what the rules are on that topic.
I, I can address it.
Okay, thank you.
I, I mean, I, I'm not an expert in it, but I can say that in order to practice any type of cosmetology in New Jersey, whether it's barbering, hairstyling, nails, you have to have a license from the Division of Cosmetology. And in order to have either a barber shop or a hair salon, that has to be a licensed facility that's approved and reviewed by the state. You're not allowed to open up your own barber shop in your basement. You're not allowed to open up your own cosmetology shop in your basement. And if people are doing that, they're subject to some fairly serious fines by the DCA through the Division of Cosmetology and Licensing. So it's not encouraged. The whole purpose of it and the reason that people go to licensed facilities that have been reviewed and inspected by the state and are inspected throughout the course of their operation is to ensure that they're safe, they're cleanly, they're following all the very stringent hygienic requirements in terms of sterilizing instruments, et cetera. And so people should be encouraged that when they're using any type of facility, they're going to licensed facilities, not people's basements or garages, et cetera, because that's not authorized by the DCA and the Division of Cosmetology in the state of New Jersey.
What about for hair, hairdresser that they go to people's homes?
I, I can't speak to that. Again, I'm not an expert, but I don't think that somebody's home, home, you know, there's, you're supposed to be operating in a licensed facility. Unless that person has a license in their facility or their home, I don't know if that's appropriate. My suggestion is, ma'am, is if you're, if you're aware of this, you should contact the Division of Cosmetology and, and get guidance. Or if you think somebody's doing something that's not in conformance to law, you have the right to report them to the Division of Cosmetology. The, the governing body, the governing body does not have any jurisdiction specifically over the licensing of cosmetologists, barbers, or the licensing of their facility. Of course, our Board of Health and our sanitarians go out and inspect businesses that are operating legally. But if somebody's operating illegally, that's something that you'd have to bring up to Division of Cosmetology.
Yeah, and that's the difficult part is that someone like me, we, you know, I follow all the rules and the license that it needs to be in place. And, and I'm pretty sure the other beauty salons in Summit are doing the same thing. And the hard part is if any way Summit can inform the community that, or do encourage the community to come to us, not to bring people to their own homes.
Well, I think, I mean, I think that this conversation this evening and what we're saying is, is that for safety purposes, people should be going to licensed facilities that have been reviewed, inspected and approved by the state of New Jersey. And there's a license that says this is a safe facility for people to go to. And as you know, all of the licensed facilities have to comply with the Division of Cosmetology's COVID responses in terms of masks, hand sanitizers, cleaning each of the areas where people are, having separate things. I mean, they're very stringent to ensure that people are being treated safely when they're getting either hair or nails done. And so people, you know, for public health and public safety reasons, they should be going to licensed facilities.
You are correct. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. And we have another comment from Diane Dressdale. You could state your name and your address, please? Oh, I think we have to promote her to panelist.
Yeah, it's not allowing me to.
I just did it. I think it'll work.
Oh, okay.
Diane, can you, can you hear us? Diane?
She's not muted.
Yeah, I can't understand why this isn't working. She got promoted.
Okay, China.
Okay.
Diane?
Okay.
Oh.
Hi, can you hear us?
I think, I think we have her.
We can see her, but can we hear her?
Miss, I think you need to unmute or turn your volume.
I don't think the volume's working.
No, maybe she doesn't have a microphone.
Yeah. So you know what? If you'd like to call back and try to use the phone as your audio, we can come back to you if you'd like to do that. Okay. So we'll move on then to, to the next person. I'm, I'm sorry about that. So we've got Eileen Kelly.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening. This is Eileen Kelly, 47 Woodland Avenue. Good evening to the council. In addition to the NJEDA second phase that was launched and commented on earlier, over the, over the weekend, the governor announced that $6 million in grants of up to $10,000 would be available for small businesses in 64 municipalities across the state. Summit was not on that list. Does the council or the city have any insight into why Summit wasn't on the list? And is there any plan to do any work with the state to, to get Summit on that list? Thank you.
Mayor, it looks like you have an answer to that.
I believe, and, and Matt or Michael can correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the list is based upon wealth and demographics. And Summit does not make the cut. So it's a formula and we don't, we don't, our demographics and our wealth in the community doesn't, no matter how we've got in terms of small businesses, we don't, we don't meet the criteria, unfortunately.
Okay, I'm just, from the perspective of, just to follow up there, a lot of our small business owners obviously might not fit the criteria to live in Summit. Was that at all taken into consideration? Or is there any discussion that could possibly had, you know, with the state to, to bring to light that some of these small businesses are truly struggling in Summit?
You know, I don't know, Eileen. But I do know that that, because that Summit is the kind of city it is, that we, was one of the motivating factors behind the Sustained Summit Fund and Jump Start Summit to help take care of our businesses because we are often not the recipient of state aid, just like in our schools, where we, we actually need it, but we don't get it because we don't fit the criteria according to the state. So I don't know the specifics of, at the state, but that's, that's my understanding.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other comments from members of the public?
Council President, Ms. Drysdale has joined us again, I believe.
Oh, that's.
If you want to try her again. She hasn't, doesn't raise her hand, but I'm sure she'd like to speak.
Okay. Ms. Dressdale, are you? Oh, let's see. Oh, there she is. Okay. Would you like to try again, Diane? It doesn't look like it's better.
No.
Okay. All right. Any, is there anything that, that you guys can, oh, there you are. Can we hear you? Okay, I think this isn't going to work tonight. I'm sorry for that. I guess we'll have to, we'll, we'll have to look into how to address this in the future. Are there any other comments from members of the public before we move on? Okay, so with that, I will declare the public comment period closed and we'll move on to resolutions. So our first set of resolutions is the, is finance. Before we get started, I'm going to ask if there are any comments from members of the public on the two finance resolutions on the agenda. Okay, so seeing none, Councilmember Vartan, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Council President. So the first, the first resolution is 7290. This resolution authorizes the cancellation of unexpended balances from past capital improvement projects. The completed projects date back to 2011 through 2016, and the funds saved from each project range from 11 cents to $237,000. The total amount of canceled funds is $1,870,515.19. Of that, $984,931.37 was bonded, and those funds will be returned to the Capital Improvement Fund or the capital surplus, which will allow the city to borrow less for future capital projects. This housekeeping resolution was the result of a deep dive into these past projects and yet another example of very sound fiscal management on the part of our city treasurer, administrator, and finance committee. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries on to finance number two, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is 7300. This resolution authorizes an amendment to the budget to accept the 2020 Clean Communities Grant. This money is traditionally used by Summit Downtown, Inc. to pay for trash pickup in the downtown on the weekends. The total amount of this grant and the corresponding expenditure is $39,752.48. And for those who are following along closely, this resolution also cancels resolution number 39406. This grant money was accepted in error under the recycling tonnage grant rather than the Clean Communities Grant. This simply, simply cleans that up and ensures that the funds match the description. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So moving on, we've got one resolution from law and labor. Before we take, Councilmember Bowman, do you have, could you go ahead and introduce that, please?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. ID number 7281 is to grant person-to-person and place-to-place liquor license transfer to D and M Liquors, or from D and M Liquors to Cambridge Wine Cellar. You know, this resolution basically is transferring a license, and it's encouraging that this business Cambridge is going through with us at this time. They're opening up. They are at the 320 Springfield Avenue, right there around the, the bike shop. We are encouraged that someone is opening a business at this time. And so I move this, this license, or this resolution at this time.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on, we've got one resolution from administrative policies and community services. Councilmember Nigel.
Thank you, Council President. As per closed session, I would like to nominate for the Technology Advisory Committee, Justin Joffe, to be a member of that committee.
A second.
So just to clarify, this is actually a mayoral appointment that we are confirming as council. And I, he sounds like he will be a, a great asset to this committee and we look forward to working with him. And with that, are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public? So all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
I abstain, Council President.
Okay, thank you. So the motion carries. Moving on, community programs and parking services. Councilmember Sullivan. Oh, you know what? I'm going to, just for simplicity's sake, I'm going to ask for any comments on, from the public on any of these three resolutions. Okay, I don't see any comments. So Councilmember Sullivan, would you like to go ahead and introduce the first one, please? Okay?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7207, to award the bid for the Summit Family Aquatic Center Pool Resurfacing Project for $463,307.50. It's been 14 years since we last resurfaced the pool, and the normal guidance is every eight to 12 years. So we received our money's worth from the last time we did this kind of work. The last few years, we have been able to get by with patchwork on some of the trouble spots. The city received two bids for this project, and we are pleased to inform the public that CFM Construction of Sterling, New Jersey was the winning bid on this project. The city has an ongoing and good working relationship with them as they open and close the pool every year for DCP. Needless to say, they know our pool. The scope of the work includes draining the water, plaster and tile removal, and resurfacing of the main pool and the leisure pool with work to begin at the end of the swim season. I move this resolution.
A second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, so with that, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to community programs, number two, Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7192, to award the bid for the Broad Street Repair Project for $308,770. The city received five bids on the structural repairs and waterproofing of the Broad Street Garage, and we are and we are pleased to inform you that South Shore Construction of Woodbridge, New Jersey, was the winning bid. We have had previous contracts with South Shore Construction, and their work has been performed within the city's guidelines and expectations. From Boswell Engineering's estimates, we had projected the cost for this project to be $370,100. Because of the pandemic and the reduced use of the garage, we were able to save money by scheduling the work during normal business hours during the week instead of during nights and weekends, which results in higher costs and a noise ordinance waiver. The target start date is August 1st and should be done by August 23rd, weather permitting. Communication will be going out from the city to keep everyone informed. In very recent council meetings, Councilman Vartan has informed us that the money for this project has been diligently set aside by our parking services agency over a number of years, and this is not a request for new money from our taxpayers. Oh, and just a quick note on Boswell. I want to remind everyone that our, at our February 19th council meeting, when we entered into an agreement with them for professional services regarding the Broad Street Garage, that those services include construction inspection, which means they will be on-site to oversee the project while the contractor is conducting his work. I move this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay, moving on, we've got one more community, motion carries. We've got one more Community Programs and Parking Services Resolution, Councilmember Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID number 7298. To grant permission and set forth conditions for the YMCA use, to use a portion of the library lot. The Summit YMCA has requested permission from the city's Property Use Committee to erect a tent and use a portion of the library parking lot for outdoor exercise for their members. In a similar fashion to our resolution that passed at the June 9th council meeting that allowed local fitness clubs to use the Village Green, the Community Programs and Parking Services Committee is recommending that the Summit YMCA be permitted to use a portion of the library lot from August 1st through October 15th, 2020, from 5:00 AM to 7:00 PM. A map of the proposed area was included in the, in the agenda packet and shows the area of the parking lot that is closest to the YMCA building, almost exactly between Maple Street and Cedar Street. The blocked off area will take up roughly 12 parking spots. Permission to host these daily exercise sessions is subject to receiving a hold harmless agreement and insurance certificate meeting the city's standards. At least two weeks prior to their start date, the YMCA shall submit to the city clerk's office proof of state certifications of all vendors participating, and the YMCA should also provide emergency contact information to the city clerk's office and to the Summit Police Department. The tent will be authorized once the YMCA receives approval from the Summit Fire Department. The YMCA must be compliant with all federal, state, and local guidelines regarding the coronavirus pandemic, including but not limited to social distancing and the wearing of masks. We don't have a strong feeling that Governor Murphy is going to reopen indoor gyms in the near future, and the YMCA surveyed their members, and 286 said they would be interested in this outdoor exercise. So I move this resolution.
A second.
Any comments from members of council? Councilmember Bowman.
I, I love the idea. I guess the only question I have is, the first bullet on the event, it says applicant should encourage attendees to use Broad Street Garage. Now, we just went over and said, you know, that it's going to be under construction for a while. But I guess I just want to understand what that first bullet is.
The packet was amended, when it went into the packet, there was an amended version. It's possible you're looking at an old version of the resolution. That was corrected.
Okay.
Councilmember Sullivan, can you just remind us what that first bullet said? I'm not remembering.
Yeah, that was, there was an amended page sent out by our city clerk, and it says, the applicant, it's a, number one, the number one bullet that you're referring to, Councilman Bowman, has been crossed off, and it reads applicant shall ensure adherence to current parking regulations as provided by the Parking Services Agency. So normal parking applies. They do, they are not being directed to the Broad Street Garage.
And that corrected resolution is in the public packet. So if you look on the city's website, the correct one is on there as well. So any other questions or comments from members of council? Rita, did, did you have something?
I just wanted to add that they will, they're going to have a pot on their property, the YMCA property, and they're going to break down this outdoor gym every day. So there's no equipment left outside. It will all be secured each evening. Do I ensure this of that?
That's good to hear. So, so the tent will remain up, but none of the gym equipment will stay out?
That's correct.
Okay, that's excellent. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Motion carries, and moving on, we've got, let's see, three Capital Projects and Community Services resolutions before we, before Councilmember Little introduces those. Are there any comments from members of the public on any of those three resolutions? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember Little, would you like to go ahead?
Thank you, Council President. The first Capital Projects Resolution is number 7271, and that's to authorize the change order for Wallace Road Improvement Project. As members of council, we remember the Wallace Road was a that it had experienced a lot of flooding during rainstorms, and we had residents from that area come to council meetings several times to talk with us. We developed, the engineering department developed a recommended solution to those problems, and we approved the budget for that, and the work went forward this past spring. And much of it was done during the stay-home orders, which was convenient for residents as well. I'm happy to report that the project's been finished, and in the last two large rainstorms, the community services has reported back that the drainage problems have been drastically reduced, and the new drainage system seemed to be working very well. So I'm really happy about that, and I'm sure I wanted to update everyone on that. This is the final change order for the project and just reflects the actual costs of the materials. The project included insulation of storm sewers, curbing sidewalks, and milling and paving. Some items in the project saw increases, some saw decreases, and so we were left with a minimal overall increase of $1,870.88. So I ask that we approve the resolution for this change order.
I second it.
Are any comments from members of council? I'm really pleased that this work has been successful in terms of controlling the stormwater on Wallace Road, and I commend the engineering department for doing a great job with this. And I also wanted to just confirm that this was actually, this project was in large part funded by grants. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Count, Mr. Cascades, is there something that, it looked like you were about to say something?
I was going to answer the question you had, Council.
Oh, okay. All right. Did you want to elaborate, or that's, that's enough?
No, I think that the engineering did a great job on managing that project as well as engineering the project to reduce the flooding in that area.
Thank you. So all those, any other comments from any members of council? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Oh, and any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Capital Projects, number two.
The second Capital Projects Resolution is number 7302, and that's to award the bid for the 2020 Fall Citywide Tree Planting. So we got six bids, which was great, and we are awarding the bid to SJC Lawn Care, who also did the spring tree planting, and DCS and the forester are both very happy with the job that they did. So we are happy that they won the bid. I also wanted to point out for Councilmember Naiden's benefit that there are going to be a number of native species in the fall citywide planting. So I wanted to make sure that we noted that as well. This is partially funded through a couple of budgets, but also through a Union County grant for $13,000. And I ask that we approve this project.
I second it.
Any comments, any comments from members of council? I had one question. I'm wondering, does this bring us up to the 250 trees that we committed to plant for this year?
I believe that it does. This, this covers 170 trees, and I believe that 80 trees were already done. Is that correct, Director Cascades?
That is correct, and the county will also be planting about 150 trees in the fall as well.
So we'll actually get closer to 400 this year total.
That's correct. Yeah.
That's great news, and that goes a long way. Last, in this winter, we had committed to do, to plant 1,000 trees in memory of our colleague, Matt Gould. So I'm really pleased to see that we're so far along in that process. And, you know, Matt always pushed us to do more in terms of planting. He wanted a million trees, but we're, I'm pleased to see how much progress we are making. Yeah, exactly. Baby steps. Councilmember Naiden.
Since we're talking about trees, I'd like to give a shout out to the Environmental Commission, and the folks who were involved with planting the trees. If folks recall, we had approved a grant application that dealt with putting trees along the Passaic River. And if you go to the transfer station, once you go into it, you'll see immediately there some tree plantings. Those of us who were involved a long, long time ago in the Environmental Commission recall that that area where we worked on used to be full of knotweed, and it was just shocking actually to see those trees planted. And some of the members of the Environmental Commission at that time used to have to inject the knotweed with, to, to try to kill it, and then look at the difference, because I think at that time, people just assumed there was no way anything could be done other than just to let the knotweed grow and, or pave it. And it is really a testament to hard work over a long period of time to get to where we are. But it's great that we're improving the, the tree planting in this town. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor?
I just also want to give a shout out to the members of the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. They have worked hard with our forester, John Linson, to advertise to the community about trees, and then have tagged each of the new trees that were planted, explaining watering and so on and so forth. So they've, I think Stevie would agree that they, it was a committee that, that has been, come to life, so to speak, and very, very helpful to John. So thank you to them for their hard work.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Bowman.
Yeah, and there's going to be some good things coming from them. They're looking to, to do some more education in the fall, so I think that will be another opportunity for, for Summit to continue to be a Tree City USA.
That's right. I think this is our 25th year, so I'm glad to see that there's all this activity. Director Cascades, I have one question for you. Have all the locations for the fall tree planting have been identified?
They have, Council President, and letters will be going out to those property owners shortly, so they have the opportunity to provide comment, and we, they will also have an opportunity to choose species based on the species that you're awarding today. So there's going to be some opportunities for them. And if I may, Council President, I'd like to, yeah, sure, thank you. So I'd like to encourage, you know, all the property owners that do receive a tree adjacent to their property to inform us if they see any decline in the tree. These trees are warranted or guaranteed for one year, and it would be helpful if they did share that information with us, so we could address the issue as soon as possible. And also encourage residents that have, that will be having trees in the, planted in the right-of-way adjacent to their property to also water trees if we do see some dry weather, which looks like we've been doing well with the precipitation and the rain we're having now. But in the future, if it does get dry, I encourage them to, you know, water the trees to add to their survival. It's very important that trees are watered within two, the first two years of planting.
Will those trees come with information sheets about how to care for the tree and also who to contact if there's a problem?
It will, yes.
Okay, great. Okay, any other comments from members of council? Okay, with that, all those in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Capital Projects, number three, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Capital Projects Resolution number three is number 308. To amend the professional service agreement for our redevelopment attorney. This is because, under our ESCO agreement with the redevelopment team, the, most of the costs will be reimbursed to the city. And so in our 2020 operating budgets, we reduced the budget amount from $50,000 to $30,000. So this is, in essence, a housekeeping resolution, so that the amount that we're authorized to pay in fees would be sealed by that budget number of $30,000 rather than $50,000. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
I second this.
Any comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, so we're now moving on to the consent agenda. And generally, we would take all of those items as a whole, but I believe we have one from the floor, Councilmember Vartan.
That's correct, Council President. So we'll be adding a resolution into the consent agenda from the floor. The ID number is 7317, and this is a resolution to authorize the city treasurer to pay the bills between now, the 28th of July, and the 14th of August, which is the end of the next billing cycle. Bills paid during that time will be sent to the governing body for the usual oversight at the next council meeting. We typically do not meet in August, but the work of the city continues. People should take comfort in knowing that committees, some committees continue to meet. Especially in the Finance Committee, we will be very closely monitoring tax collection and expenditures throughout the month of August, which is one of the most expensive months for the municipality. And of course, council members will continue to be available. So I move this resolution be added to the consent agenda.
Do I have a second on that? And Madam Clerk, do we vote on, on that one separately from the rest of the agenda?
No, Council President, you can take them all together as a whole now.
Okay, so before we do that, before we vote on them, are there any comments from members of council or members of the public? Okay, so with that, do I have, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
And do I have a second? Okay, all those, okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? Okay, the motion carries. So moving on to council members' comments and new business, does anyone have anything they'd like to raise at this point in the meeting? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, don't all rush there. Okay, so all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All right, well, thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Be safe and be well, and have a happy August, and I'm sure we'll all be seeing each other. So thanks very much. Good night.
Enjoy your summer. Thank you.